Welcome, everybody. I hope everybody had the opportunity to enjoy the summer of Chatham. You know, I think we're the area I'm in, Miller's Port, 96.6. And my daughter and granddaughter living down around Cedarville, all over 100%. It just, it was pretty amazing. I mean, they had such a short generation, but you know, what is it? Those 44 years before that occurred. Down town around. But again, I hope everybody had the opportunity. So we, the commissioners, offered the opportunity for residents, taxpayers, and others to make public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the podium and give your name and address. We're limited to three minutes. So who would like to be first?
Good morning. I'm Melissa Hoover Connor, and I live at 7710 Cattail Road in Pleasantville, outside of Pleasantville. As a concerned lifelong citizen of Walnut Township, I would like to address a loss that goes unmentioned when a playground bully comes to town. You know how we are concerned about well water quality, field tile, battery, fires, property values, and the like. But by this bully preying on our farmland, our community has already been damaged. Neighbors stop speaking to each other. Folks stop patronizing local businesses that may have a different view. Nasty posts are made on social media. Rumors fly. I got involved with Citizens for Fairfields because, well, I'm a farmer's daughter. And I knew I could not live with myself if I didn't try to protect our farmland and our community. Educating the public as to how this process works is essential and very challenging. And I'm learning as I go. I like to say, but this is my first rodeo. According to Senate Bill 52, an exclusionary zone may be put in place for wind and solar. If the projects we know of, Eastern Cotton Tail, Ripley, and Carnation, are partially grandfathered or grandfathered, the zone will not apply to those projects. Those projects will not be stopped by the Board of Commissioners. Project approval or denial will be decided by the Ohio Power Signing Board. So you don't need to worry about a lawsuit because you don't have the final decision on partially grandfathered or grandfathered projects. However, including these leased lands in the zone demonstrates to the Ohio Power Signing Board the unity and conviction Fairfield County has about how to use our prime farmland, a finite resource that feeds people. When frankly, there are still too many questions about how this will all play out. Putting the leased land in exclusionary zones reinforces the outcome of the many meetings held to determine our county's future in the updated land use plan. The bullies have a lot of experience under their collective belts. It's nothing for them to spin and out and out lie to avoid answering questions. They prey upon us, good folks that we are, knowing that we don't fully understand the process, and they start years before we have any idea that we're going to have to learn all about it, spend tens of thousands of dollars of our own money to get representation, and then cross our fingers that the unelected Ohio Power Signing Board will decide in our favor. Commissioners, we want to work with you. We want a transparency coming from your office that reassures that you are doing all you can to protect us from those whom don't play fair. For instance, EDF Renewables has purposely started misspelling Eastern Cotton Tail on government documents to avoid detection from the citizens of Fairfield County. Why would anyone want to be in business with this playground bully? Gentlemen, please support us.
Hi. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak again for my family, my community. My name is Selena McCord. I live at 8640 Rockner Road, Millersport, Ohio. And I want to talk about fighting for the generation behind us, about preserving this beautiful country in which we have God-given rights. I focus on teaching my six kids integrity because I want them to grow up and be thankful for good life. My husband and I want them to crave good over evil, putting others over their own selfish motives and fears. We would like to just be able to have our local government to model that integrity as well. I love our country. My dad served in the United States Air Force for half of my childhood, and he instilled a love in me to do what's right for our country. So just a little bit about us. Our family downsides from a big suburb home in a lofty neighborhood with HOA and all of that, just to have this peaceful, happy life with my kids, to be able to have community. We've had a lot of interactions with our neighbors. We raise our own chickens. We've been able to share our eggs. We buy beef from our farmers across the road. Actually, they helped us tow our truck out yesterday from the mud with their big tractor. And we just love the, we love what our kids are seeing in this small-town community. If solar industrial farm, if a solar industrial farm became our neighbor, this would no longer be a peaceful environment, and everything would change. The flooding is a concern in our township. I know a lot of you saw that last week as we drove home. The whole project area was just flooded, and we've spent thousands of dollars in our 1910 home. We have one sump pump in our cellar, and it can only handle so much. The runoff created from the solar panels would not create a natural flow of water. There was a lawsuit at a home called Honeybee Ranch in California because the local solar company did not do the proper planning for the flooding in the area. It was awarded $6.5 million in damages. Did EDF Renewables do proper testing for flooding grading or stormwater management activities that are necessary? It's important for us to consider. This would affect my family. We do homeschooling. My husband's business is based at home. And just to mention a little bit about EDF Renewables, they're a nationwide company of 35 years, I'm sure you know that, and they do use bullying tactics to push their projects along. They threaten lawsuits if people choose to change their decisions, and they do this with it before it's even physically done. It doesn't even include if their testing could be faulty. We've even had an incident three weeks ago where we had to call the local police because we had a car, it's actually a truck with an Indiana license, haul over to the side beside the field beside our home. Okay, I'm sorry. So you know, this does, if you would look at EDF's site, you will, their website, you will see that they have a comment that says it creates minimal impact to the community. I disagree. It's already affected us. In Kneyston Township near Kason in Minnesota, EDF pushed a project 1,200 acres in without the township board or the local trustees even having to say. And you can look that up if you want. But just like Miller's Port, this land is important to our local identity. I live in Miller's Port, and the Sweet Corn Festival is a big identity marker for our community. So I just request, thank you. I requested our board would seek review, and I also ask that you would choose to not grow weary in doing right and have courage to fight for the generation behind us. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Sean Redder. I live at 840 Baker Road, Stausfeld, Ohio. I'm a lifelong resident and manage a clear preschool district. And I'm here today to comment on exclusion zones. I understand that these are being proposed for the county. We look at the founding of this great nation. We go back to as far as the Magna Carta and realize that this was something special. The United States of America was founded on the principles that man could govern himself. Exclusion zones give the power of two people in this county to dictate what 160,000 people do with their land. To me, that's tyranny. My father was in the United States National Guard during Vietnam. You know, my father, my grandfather thought, even during World War II, preserve the concept that men should be able, and women should be able to govern themselves freely. As a farmer and a small businessman and a solar leaseholder currently, I'm here to say that exclusion zones will only ruin the opportunity for the next generation of my family farm. And I know there's people scratching their heads right now at that comment, but it's fact. We're living in an area where intel is encroached on our county. That's why we're talking about all this planning. But my children, the fifth generation of our family farm, will probably not have the opportunity to farm because buying ground and continuing our farming operation has become prohibited. From when I bought my farm, which we lived on for, I've lived on for 50 years, my parents share dropped that with famine until 2018. My wife and I were fortunate enough to be able to buy that farm. And so hopefully, we can keep up what we're doing. But as we go forward, what we paid for that farm in 2018, land prices had quadrupled. I don't know anybody that can pay today's current land prices and farm them unless they've been given thousands of acres through generational wealth. I'm a first-generation farmer. I just bought, me and my wife just bought this property. We also run a full-time business to subsidize it because the thousand acres we farm will not make a payment on that farm that we purchased. We do that, and we, I'm not asking for sympathy, we have a plan. And now we're making business decisions with this solar lease because it is going to allow us to hopefully expand our operation elsewhere so our fifth generation has an opportunity. Without this solar lease, we would be stuck at a thousand acres. I don't, I don't know how we can buy ground and continue doing what we do as a family. So I'm hopeful that this works out, and I'm also very faithful in the U.S. farmer because, you know, as we take the latest stat from Facebook, 20,000 acres have came up, or I'm certain, parks. Thank you. And you know, we grew a record crop last year. The American farmer always figures out a way to produce good, effective, cheap food for the American consumer, and then we continue to do that. So I ask that you guys, as we go forward, do not consider to go down the road to tyranny and try to dictate what the 160,000 citizens of this county want their ground. Thank you.
Who would like to be next, please?
Very fine. We're at 3464 South Bank Road, Walnut Township. I've got my map holders here. From my own map, not knowing if you guys are going to have a map today or not. This is from the USDA, and it's the cropland for Fairfield County. All of the dark green area and the yellow area, it's got the different types of crops and everything.
We have people online. If you're able to speak into the mic, that would be helpful.
Sure. And I know online you can't see this map, but all of the dark green area and the yellow area on that map, and this is according to the USDA, which the farmers have to report what they're growing. Okay. The latest one that I have is 2022, so that's a year and a half ago. And you see over where Eastern Cotton Tail is going to be. That's prime farmland. It was all grown in soybeans and corn and, and then down here, Amanda, there's the other project. The solar companies want prime farmland because it's easy for them to do construction. That's going to be destroyed. Last week's meeting, Cypress Creek Renewables, the representative was here, they're taking over up in Liberty Township, which we thought that project was going to be dead, but it's not. They're starting to lease more and more land right now. EDF is continuing to lease land. Right now, it's almost 2,300 acres. And I appreciate the gentleman that talked about farm and everything else, but when you take that land out of production and you say, we're saving it for the future generations or whatever, 30 years, it's going to be out of production for 30 years. That next generation is going to have some other, some of their jobs, some of their career. It used to be where farmers was generation after generation after generation. If you read the letters that have been sent in to the commissioners, there are letters in there from landowners, and one of which has leased a lot of land, talking about how their kids grew up there and they learned how to work on the farm and the beauty of the farm, and they leased it to solar. 30 years, those kids aren't going to farm that land in 30 years?
30 seconds, please.
So we need your support, and we need for you to continue the entire 13 townships as exclusionary zones. And I know some people talk about property rights, but what about, so property rights of approximately 12 landowners cannot infringe upon hundreds of owners with their property rights. So I hope you do the right thing.
Who would like to be next? Anyone else? Last chance.
Kevin Elder, 6800 Baltimore Somerset Road, Pleasantville, Ohio. And thank you for the opportunity to speak again. On these projects, we have seventh-generation farms, Elder Road, Pleasantville. We have still not had any contact with EDF after attending their information meetings or anything else about our concerns for drainage and stormwater runoff, both coming, our farm's drain onto the proposed project, and we take two 500-acre watersheds off of the project. They're primarily solar. Concerns about these projects would have been solved if they were covered under local zoning. Reason that there's the opportunity for exclusionary zones is the fact that it's not covered with local zoning. I had one of the representatives discussing with me last week said, well, you could have warehouses on this property. I said, no, you can't because it's not zoned for warehouses. The use of this, these properties after the 30 years or 40 years that it's in utility concerns me. But there's been no research that shows it can go back to being good farmland. With the infrastructure installed and previous experience with utilities, it's doubtful whether the inspections there and the requirements to put it back to where it was before could ever be attempted. So I, since there is no zoning, I encourage the use of exclusionary and hope you support those. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next, please?
Melissa Thomas, 4718 Baltimore Somerset Road, Pleasantville. It seems like the land use plan is the only topic that has been discussed for several months now, maybe even a year. Meanwhile, EDF and the Eastern Cotton Tail Solar Project moves forward to its goal. We have been asking for an exclusionary zone for every year now. This has really affected my quality of life for almost two years. I am personally outraged finding out that after spending two years of my life dealing with this project that will destroy farmland, devastate our community and people's lives, and the Eastern Cotton Tail Solar Project is potentially being excluded from the exclusion zone back because someone might get sued. People get sued every day. In my world, the facts, truth, and goodness still prevail. If Eastern Cotton Tail is partially grandfathered, which we would like to see approved on that, according to Senate Bill 52, and my understanding, an exclusionary zone would not apply to this project anyway. Excluding Eastern Cotton Tail would send a message to the Ohio Power Signing Board that our commissioners have given in to EDF. I would certainly hope as a taxpayer and a citizen of Walnut Township, my elected officials would think our community is worth fighting for, and they would want to preserve the land and protect the taxpayers. If so, you will include Eastern Cotton Tail in the exclusionary zone back and use some of our tax dollars to fight for our community before our time runs out. We have been waiting for this conversation for every year now. Isn't this part of the reason I pay taxes for protection from things just like this? Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
I'm Beverly Sturm, 1556 Raffmill Road, Lockhorn, Ohio. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and I also want to thank you for all the meetings that you guys had of the townships last fall. That was awesome. Thank you for meeting to create the exclusionary zone in the first place. You may ask why, why is somebody from Lockhorn, Little Lockhorn, Ohio, here to speak? I am a property owner in Fairfield County. I grew up in Fairfield County. I appreciate the support you've given the Fairfield County. I know you support the 4H at the county fair. I am here because between my mom's side and my dad's side, I'm related to probably half the people in Fairfield County.
Do you love the scene?
My Aunt Rita Ricketts was mayor of Pickerington. She was like the first woman mayor. So I have really deep roots in Fairfield County. And I appreciate that you are working to create an exclusionary zone. I want to remind you of all the taxes that are generated by farming in Fairfield County, whether it be property taxes or income taxes. I was amazed at how much income tax my family had to pay recently, sales tax as well. So I'm asking you, I'm beseeching you for the love of God and country to please include all of the townships in Fairfield County in the exclusionary zone. Thank you very much.
Who would like to be next, please? Last chance. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for coming. Amy, anything else? Jeff?
You're up, buddy. Thank you. So for this week in review, we have a couple of items to discuss. One of them is the Corsa renewal. This is a three-year renewal with the County Risk Sharing Authority. The county has a joint self-insurance pool that participates in with other counties, and this overall reduces our risk and prevents losses and injuries. However, we have experienced an almost 20% increase in this year's rate for Corsa. This is largely due to the reinsurance market and the inability to obtain reinsurance that covers law enforcement matters. This is happening across the country. So this is the second year that's occurred, but wanted to make you aware of it. The, there is a resolution for the approval of the three-year agreement in today's voting portion of the meeting. April 30th, Board of Commissioners meeting will be in the evening at 7 o'clock at the Wagnall's Memorial Library in Lythopolis. The commissioners hold four evening meetings per year, and the meeting allows those who are unable to attend at a 9:00 hour to attend a commissioners meeting during the year. The first meeting was, evening meeting was in January. We have another scheduled August 6th at Wiglong Event Center in Pickerington, and one in November, one on November 19th that will be held in Pleasant Township. Now move on to the highlights of resolutions, administrative approvals. There are a list of the administrative approvals that took place this week in your packet. Today, there are 14, or excuse me, 15 resolutions on the agenda for the voting pattern today. You will note that there are four resolutions to appoint members of the Violet Township New Community Authority. We had done this previously, and these are all the same individuals that we appointed previously that are being appointed at this time. Felicia Hens, Doug How, Doug Williams, and Laurie Saunders. So those are on for today. We also have a resolution authorizing the use of additional ARP funds for the Fairfield County Sewer District's Regional Lift Station project. Director Vogel, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. It's a regional lift station for Violet Township. This is, the fund's got a chain. Stacy, for doing transfers, they're going to react dollars. It is going to take all of the western portion of Violet Township to. We'll have all of Violet Township covered in sewer and water.
That's great. And as we continue to wind down the spending on the American Rescue Plan funds, we may see some shifting between now and December on those funds and what, what we're spending them upon. There's also a resolution authorizing the purchase of a modular from the City of Lancaster Board of Parks Commissioners for a dollar to use as a training facility for the sheriff's office. We will, the county will be responsible for all the costs associated with permits, repairs, removal, and transportation from the modular's current location at 701 Union Street. There's a resolution to approve loan documents for the Fairfield County CARES Act revolving loan fund for Beer Geeks LLC Double Edge Brewing Company. Rick, would you like to speak to that one?
So this is just the official paperwork to provide the loan to Double Edge, a great downtown Lancaster kind of ore stone, and they are operating on a canning operation, be able to sell canned beer out of their location, which is a smart growth opportunity.
Thank you. We also have a resolution approving an MOU, an MOU for the commitment of funds to the Ohio University from Super Rapids Funds previously awarded to Fairfield County. As previously announced, the state of Ohio allocated the funds to Fairfield County through House Bill 33 in the 135th General Assembly for Ohio University for Engineering Technology and Healthcare Programs. We've agreed to reimburse OU up to $1.48 million for purchases for these programs. Rick, would you like to speak to that one as well?
Yes, so my friend Mr. Coaches here has been helping work on the engineering technology lab build-out. Then with that, we'll be about $1.2 million of new equipment for engineering technology that OU will put into there. And the rest of the funding is for Respiratory Therapy Lab, which will be going in May down to Sinclair College to look at their respiratory therapy lab. And a lot of that, so really nice new programming that we'll be able to.
Thank you.
Thank you to Representative Ray for helping get this through the house, and we're starting to see that plenty trickle in, and definitely.
Thank you, Rick. We also have a resolution approving the bid award to US Bridge for $93,000 for the WAL-05 Guider Road Superstructure Replacement Project. I couldn't see anybody from the engineer's office here. And finally, we have a resolution approving the bid award to Cooper Concrete Services for the CDBG Village of Pleasantville Pool Improvements. Holling, would you want to speak to that?
This is for the neighborhood revitalization grant that's been submitted before that the county received. We were timing this project with the summer because the pool shares access with, in property with the school district. So we're getting this forwarded now so that my school gets done, they can start the construction.
Thank you very much. We have a budget review.
Before we do that, should I make, so the resolution about Corsa, you threw that, and I'm sure I just didn't understand what was being said, but there's a line in there about car insurance for $630,000. I couldn't understand why we would spend 60,000. I couldn't understand why we would spend $630,000 on car insurance.
We're not spending $630,000 for car insurance. What, what the program total cost is for the year is about $608,000 for all of our liability coverage, including auto, errors and omissions, all of the buildings that we have. One thing that we do have to keep in mind about our coverage with Corsa is things are changing and being adjusted now because the reinsurance markets are becoming much tighter in that process. Our current deductible for auto is $5,000.
Right, so I just, I saw the number. It seemed like it was part of that card, but I got it. Thank you for clarifying.
No problem. We'll move on to the budget review, and we have Stacy Nysley here in place of Bart Hamst.
I sent out the budget review email invites Monday. Most of you have already responded. Thanks to John and Garrett with EMA for setting me up with the bookings app, Office 365.
I've heard that that's been very successful and helpful, so just thank, thanks to you both on that.
If you have any questions, just let me know.
Trying to move on to calendar review and invitations received.
Thank you. The CPS Child Abuse Prevention Month Breakfast is smart at 8:00 AM at the Life Church Vineyard in Pleasantville. And the Fairfield County 4H Achievement Award Program is Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Fairbanks. The Commissioner's Office received the following correspondence. Fairfield County AMH State Fiscal Year Annual Report. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown regarding update destination downtown Lancaster, interning the workforce, and a homestead program update. The auditor's wins of the week were provided. Correspondence regarding industrial solar projects. A press release from the Fairfield 33 Alliance on April 4th titled Fairfield County Workforce Center to Host Summer Explore Career Camps. And the Fairfield County Health Department's quarterly. That is it.
Commissioner Fix.
Yep, so most of you who were here last week heard me ask our staff to do their map on exclusionary zones for solar. They're still working on that. So hopefully have that in the near future, and then we'll have more to talk about. That's all I have.
Yeah, under whole business, the Indigent Defense Task Force has completed its work, and there's been a report issued. I'll paraphrase that report as just being a bit of an alphabet soup. It just kind of reported out what the task force heard, this, that, the other thing, without what I would refer to as clear direction to the legislature as to what that solution should be. I'm advised, though, that in subsequent conversations, it, it seems that Senator Manning particularly is interested in my continued input as the legislation is actually drafted towards a longer-term solution on that. So in a sense, if you, you'll recall going into the task force, we felt like we were outnumbered. And the possibility of a conclusion from that task force that was adverse to us seemed very real. And that didn't happen, so in some ways you could consider that a minor success. I attended Lancaster City Council last night. Me and the Commissioner's Office were interested in a couple of issues. One, at a moment last week and perhaps the week before, it looked like the process for transfer of transit from the city to the county was coming off the rails. I'm feeling better after last night's meeting that, that that may be getting back on track. And in that regard, there was a resolution introduced at Lancaster City Council last night to authorize the mayor to enter into negotiations with the county on an MOU, probably be on a five-year basis with us agreeing to continue providing transit services in the city and them agreeing to their commitment of $150,000 a year as we had discussed all throughout these discussions. So I guess one of the things that, that I, I don't know that any one of us needs permission to have discussions out in the community or with other entities, but if, I guess I would just like for my colleagues to trust me a little bit in terms of negotiating the final terms and conditions of that MOU with the city. Nothing can be entered into by one commissioner, so you don't, you don't need to worry about that. But I, I hope I can bring back a product from those discussions that you can support and that would be consistent with our prior discussions on that issue.
You have my support. On both the Indigent Defense and dealing with Lancaster, you are a skilled negotiator.
And finally, if I might, thank you for that. There was another minor issue at city council last night that we were interested in, and that had to do with the change of zoning for a building on Cedar Hill that would potentially be available for a tenant that might leave Cullenade if our contingent contract to acquire that building is eventually closed. It seemed to me to be helpful to us for there to be an appropriate landing space for at least one of them or of the vacating tenants. So I thought that went well. It was eight to one, which with city council, that's about as good as you could get.
So under new business commissioner, did you have anything?
Nothing.
Commissioner Fix.
I'd say thank you.
You do have one item with new business. Bennett, where are you, Bennett?
Back here.
Going up here. So Bennett is soon to get married. Is that correct, Bennett?
That's right.
So what's really interesting, who's going to officiate your wedding?
So me and my fiancee Kylie, we wanted to do the courthouse wedding. Instead of having some judge who we didn't know very well do it, I asked Commissioner Davis if he would get ordained and marry us because not only do I consider him a mentor, but a very dear friend, and he graciously. So Commissioner Davis will be marrying me and Kylie on Friday.
I have been through the process. I am officially ordained.
No, no.
No, he asked me to wear a suit, can you believe it?
So anyway, Bennett said congratulations from the vendors and staff. We wish you and your fiance at this point in time very long and happy life. So turn around here again, anything you'd like to talk about today? Anything? Holly, anything?
I just want to mention that this round of CDVG applications are due to darkness stuff this Friday. They'll check form again from our local communities or nonprofit organizations. After that, we'll review them and then be coming to the commissioners about what we want to utilize, which products, which projects we want to move forward with to utilize our funds that we get every two years. And then the other thing I want to mention is that we are kicking off the model zoning co-project. We have all villages on board now, thanks to Jason Henderson, and about half the townships on board. So the kickoff email went out about a week ago, and now we're going to start scheduling.
That's it. I think it's going to be quite an opportunity for the villages and townships because, you know, obviously some can't afford to look at zoning and then bring zoning up to the current levels where it needs to be. So thank you for doing that. I look forward to a good outcome.
Thank you to all three of you for agreeing to have that project. So we really appreciate it.
Lisa. Talking around.
Yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the FFA presentations for the state and national contest. And the Amanda Clear Creek Schools do a great job. Tony Vogel was there, as were state, local, and federal agricultural agencies. They did a terrific job, and I plan to send a note to their advisor today. One thing that I thought was tremendously encouraging was how they approached all of the topics about urbanization. Very similarly, these projects that they were addressing were similar to relevant things that are in our world today with the land use plan. And I thought these very young folks really did good research and also showed good example of how everything is not good and everything is not bad. And they were opening their eyes to all the perspectives and really good examples for adults about how to have civil conversation. So I commended, you know, these young folks for the work that they did. Plan to send a note about that today. If you have an opportunity to hear them, I would really encourage that. They are going around to a number of different places at the State House, various other locations, and getting points if they give their presentations to others. Also have the opportunity to attend the annual Heritage District Meeting, and a lot of the GIS maps were on display. So it's very good to see those and the use of how they were able to have historic maps as well as some recent ones. Thanks to Josh Harper for completing several EPA forms. It's overnight research to get that to EPA. Also want to say thanks to Lori Kidder and Julie White because they recently are renewing their notaries. And I want to mention that because we have state's notaries and without charge, those employees will provide those services to members of the public. Homestead, we have more than 8,000 participants, and that is where all of our calls are coming in right now. And most of the calls relate to how they believe the cap on the age 70 has already passed the legislature. It hasn't even left conference yet, and there is some confusion about that. So I just mentioned that there hasn't been any change in the legislation yet. BOR, as an update, we have 43 total cases, of which all have either been scheduled, addressed, or are pending. That's very good in terms of a number that's quite manageable. We will be likely done by the end of May, as long as there aren't any requests for continuances. Then the online national AGA conference, of which the topics related to uniform guidance, all of us with JFS backgrounds or EMA or even DD did not find the notice about uniform guidance to be terribly new. But for those who aren't used to those types of guidance, it was new. And the great deal of that is comes down to whichever is more restrictive, the local, state, or federal, you go with whatever's more restrictive in terms of the guidance. And that's the easiest way to explain that very long part of the conference. There are some new Gatsby pronouncements, which Stacy is aware of. We have several different analysis relating to the airport, and nothing that I heard at the conference changed any of those answers. And relating to the Veteran Services Seminar, that's scheduled now for September 26th in Pickerington at the Wigwam. Or is it the Fairfield Center? I think it's at the Fairfield Center, September 26th at the Fairfield Center. That was listed as a good practice from the Veterans Association. The more outreach you can do to help veterans, the better from their perspective. That was listed as something good at the local level. So we'll send some reminders out about that as the time approaches.
You mentioned young people in FFA, and of course, Thursday night I have to go to the 4H Achievement Event. And I'm, every time I go to that, I'm always so encouraged by some of these young people what they've been able to accomplish, so it's.
Amazing leadership skills.
Good confidence in the future. Tony, anything you'd like to?
Rick? So we did the press release out for our summer camp. Summer camps this summer. We've got one for builder camp, in a finance camp, a health care area camp, and girl's STEM camp. It's ended this year. Lancaster City Schools once again are providing an amazing amount of support of teachers, support plans to be our master schools. Thank you so much to them, Pickerington Schools, providing instructor, and also community action is providing some support too. So we're going to add two more classes this year.
So girls' STEM camp last year was on channel four, I believe.
Yeah.
Talk about an individual rather than Fairfield County putting all that together, so.
Made a good impact. It's free to any Fairfield County student going into sixth, seventh, or eighth.
I, I, I think this is terrific. What was your expectation on for now?
We're looking at about 250.
Excellent, perfect.
Just everything went well yesterday with our planned event. Good to have those. It refreshes us on, on the plan. So everything went well, and our staff did a great job coordinating.
And anything? Or anything?
Reminder, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and tomorrow we invite everybody to wear blue to raise awareness for that effort and also to attend the breakfast, our annual breakfast tomorrow morning at eight o'clock at Life Church Vineyards. Breakfast and networking at eight o'clock, and then starts with the presentation at eight thirty.
Ephesus on prevention. Yeah, I picked up on that.
Drive Spirit Home Join Me.
I need you to stand in my, in the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands. One nation, under God, in whose full liberty and justice for all.
There are announcements.
Thirty-four minutes for April 2nd, 2024.
So moved.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Minutes past three zero. From the Commissioner's Resolution 2024-4.9.a. A resolution to approve the appointment of Felicia Hens to the Violet Township New Community Authority.
Under current hearing, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development. Resolution 2024-4.9.h. A resolution to approve loan documents to fund Beer Geeks LLC as a Fairfield County CARES Act EDA revolving loan fund project.
Under Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, I move items H and I.
Discussion. Okay, that project at the Workforce Center. Expecting that to be completed by October.
October is a ten hourish.
Before.
I, I see no guarantee that it will be.
Don't need to guarantee.
There's a lot of extenuating circumstances.
Any additional discussion?
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency. Resolution 2024-4.9.j. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, EMA funds number 2090.
So moved.
Same, discussion.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Engineer. Resolution 2024-4.9.k. A resolution to approve the contract bid award for the WAL 05 Geiger Road Superstructure Replacement Project.
So moved.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services. Resolution 2024-4.9. A resolution to approve a memo receipt and expenditure for Fairfield County Job and Family Services Fund 2599 reimbursing Fund 2018.
For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items L and M.
Same, discussion.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission. Resolution 2024-4.9.n. A resolution to approve an award of bid to Cooper Concrete Services LLC for the CDBG PY. for the CDBG PY 42 Village of Pleasantville Pool Improvements Concrete Deck.
So moved?
Same.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution 2024-4.9.o. A resolution authorized the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
So moved?
Discussion? Thing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for April 16th at 9:00 AM.
Any additional items that come before the Board of Commissioners at this time? President, please. Let's just ask Brandon and John if he would have a minute to visit the behalf of the meeting. It was present. Anyone else looking for a move?